Kia ora and welcome to the Grant Subcommittee Meeting. The meeting is not being livestreamed, but it is being recorded, so it will be available online later. We're just having a few technical issues with the livestream. There will be morning tea if the meeting is still going in about an hour. We have an apology, do we, from Mayor Foster?
For leaving early.
For leaving early? Oh, good. All right. Well, let's just put the apology from Mayor Foster. I'll move that. Do I have a second there? Thank you, councillor Day. Please, if you vote with your voting buttons, one for aye, two for no. And that's Kerry. Thank you. Are there any members with conflicts of interests they need to declare? No? All right. Let's approve the minutes of the meeting held on the 23rd of June. I'll take them as read and move that they are confirmed as an accurate record. Do I have a second there? Thank you councillor Matthews. Please press one if you're in favour. Excellent. We have one member of the public here for public participation. Clint Schultz from Take Ten. Please do come up to the table, Clint. Welcome. Now you'll have 10 minutes and feel free to leave some time for questions.
Is, sorry. Brief overview of what that is. Take Ten operates primarily, or has been, on a Saturday night. Safe space in the city for people to go and take a break. So we offer water, lollies. Volunteers are extensively trained. A range of training through sexual assault training. How to communicate with people, how to... Workers that also support volunteers. But what the volunteers do is help to the public that walk past us. Gives opportunity for people to... Fortunately, we have some games. We've got Connect Four and Take Ten. The team are very focused on the connection part. To a lot of the people that come through services. If we do pick up anything underlying there, we are not youth workers or social workers. But what we do do is either give them a card for them to follow up and call, or we ask if they're comfortable to give our social worker to contact them and finishes that loop and puts them in connection. To... So Take Ten, on average, we, on a Saturday night, hours that we're in operation. Home, so if they are stranded and... We do make sure they get home safe. We either try and connect them with friends or family. Hope his angels historically, but you... And we will get them home. We also look after people that potentially have... They've lost first aid. We have a space in our unit, Take Ten Truck, where we can put them. It's set the public, so it's a safe space. It maintains their dignity. Enough to either move and get home, or we arrange for that, for that next step. We have around 40 volunteers that we do for the Saturday nights. We normally have two or three, sorry, we have about 46 on a Saturday night. Right? And if we are moving to the Fridays, we're going to have to literally double our volunteer... Make sure. And there's a lot of training, as I said, that goes into the volunteers. We have put in the application, and I know 95 is... It does seem a lot of money, but it works out to be less than $2,000 a night. Take Ten is a hungry beast. We do water, lollies, cellphone chargers. The actual Saturday nights, once a year, costs us $150. Beast. It's just volunteers. We only have one person that works for the charity that is paid. Every just supports it through their time, but no one else gets any financial benefit. It all goes through to the charity.
Thanks so much, Clint, and thanks for the work that you do. It's really valued and we saw firsthand that on Saturday night. We do have a question from councillor Pennett.
Thank you very much for coming in and the work that you do. I am struggling a bit though with priorities. Now, obviously, that's a governance question, but just because we've got a city that's, you know, struggling at the moment and it is quite a lot of money. So is there a way of getting some sponsorship for things like lollies? Do we have to be funding lollies? And we do have a couple of drinking fountains, but maybe we need to put some more drinking fountains in. But I just wondered if there's a way of making this service a bit more affordable? And also, the other question I had is around, what will you do next year? If you don't get that same amount of funding, then how will you sort of work it?
So we... And if we thought that for us, Take Ten needs to be consistent. A lot of them will just come and... They get separated, reconnect with... The lollies are important, the water... Yes, you say it is a lot of money, but if you actually break it down to $50,000... Amount of people that potentially we've saved from harm. Be police tying up the police. It is, if you look at that way out... A lot of the police drop people off to us. So do the city hosts. They bring people to us. We become that hub. And make sure they either get home safe or...
Okay, next. Thank you. Councillor Foon and councillor Matthews.
Kia ora, and I'm very sorry I couldn't make it on Saturday. I have teenage daughters, so I'm seeing what's happening out there on the streets a little bit. But yeah, thank you for all your mahi. And actually, just picking up on what councillor Ayana Pennett said. How do you give out the water? Is it in plastic bottles?
No, it's not plastic. We have compostable, biodegradable cups. It's actually made in Wellington. So it is a local manufacturer that does it, and we do get them at a cheaper price.
Yeah.
It's not for free.
Yeah, okay. No, that's really good to know. And down the track, there's a thing called Globalit, which we could look into. That's just a cup reuse system, so that, yeah, it just keeps any landfill out. But that wasn't my question, but thank you for that. So next, just were there any models around New Zealand or the world that you've copied Take? Or kind of been influenced?
Take Ten is one of a kind.
Yeah.
It's the first in New Zealand. And we found it's in Scotland, but it's very different to...
Right.
Similar but different to what we do. They have a bus where it's more of a triage than what we do. Is creating a positive vibe. We wanting people to go the distance. We want to have an influence on the drinking culture. We don't want to be a triage, and that's never what the purpose of Take Ten was. It's about, we love Wellington City. We want to create a great experience for the nighttime forum. And people coming through, there is a space where they can come. We get comments from foreigners and locals all the time. Where is there that they can use.
Right. So that's a real Wellington asset then?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Okay, thank you.
And you're welcome any Saturday. Yeah.
What's your daughters?
Thank you so much, and I, you know, want to express my admiration and appreciation for the work that you do. And I'm interested to know how... How the service, if you've noticed any kind of change over the time that you've been operating, particularly, you know, post-COVID? Is there any kind of change in the sorts of circumstances that people, you know? Anything that you've sort of noticed about the difference over time?
One is, there's been... Phase, there's been a lot younger crowd in that. We also got feedback. Unisites, but a lot... Seventy percent stay. So I think they just wanted a break from their period. Stayed here. But we've seen level two being a hu... Younger crowd. There's a lot more... Especially even last, this last Saturday, we see anywhere between 20 and 50 underage on a... And a lot of them... They run into trouble. They know we're there. They will come for... And just talking with a few of them, they tell us that it's safer to be in the city than to be at home on a Saturday, which is a sad state of affairs, but that's just how it is. That's our economy. Yeah.
And councillor Day.
Kia ora, Clint. Thanks for having us here on Saturday night. I didn't quite make it as late as the others. I'm still feeling tired now. I don't know how you do it every Saturday night. But yeah, thank you for the mahi that you do. And one of the things that I found quite interesting was that I thought the big games were really great, having the Connect Four and the Jenga, like it appealed to every person that came along, really. But just the diversity and age, so I was quite interested that while I was there, there were people across the whole, you know, sort of variant of ages that were coming in. I think when I arrived, there were people that were sort of in their 40s to 50s, sitting down on the beanbags, playing Jenga. So you, I mean, whilst you're seeing a lot of young people at the moment, it is something that which anybody feels that they can go to. You see people approaching.
Absolutely. We collect data, so our volunteer... But moving forward, we, our biggest demographic... Is from 18 to 7, but we... 50 underage. We have the early 30s. And starts again from the 40s, and that gap is generally the married kids. And then it's the after... Forced or a whole night pass where you can get out. Yeah.
This describes some people's life cycle in this room.
But in saying that, like over Christmas... A huge amount of older, more mature people go... In a long time or not used to drinking. It's Christmas parties and they go home. Definitely in, yeah, more mature that we actually have passed out and have been brought to us. So we do fill the range and each... Still, from January to April is very bad ends nights. And there's a lot of those, and some people... They've a lot of intox and come through to us. So it does change. It is a week during winter. It's just more the youngsters that are out. Yeah, so it does change. We've had on some of our worst nights with the rain, we found... It would have been, I'd say, early twenties. She was passed out in... We looked after her. What would have happened?
Kia ora, Clint, and thanks again for your mahi. And also the way that you're able to engage in questions. It's obvious that you know this area very, very well and very experienced. So thanks for coming in and do feel free to stay in the meeting or go as you need.
Thank you. Thank you for your...
Cool. So the next item on the agenda is the Arts and Culture Fund. And I'll pass over to councillor Matthews to introduce this report.
Kia ora, kato. It's my pleasure to introduce this paper, which we're funding 31 projects with grants totaling just over $177,000. I'd like to thank offices very much for the extreme amount of work that goes into getting this package together and all of the wonderful relationships they have with our creative sector. There'll be, you know, a range, we just sort of, we're talking about the familiarity or not, with some of the organisations here. Some of these names will, you know, have no resonance for us, for example, as local body politicians, show ponies, or in this group in particular, creative matriarchs. But no, I mean, there's a lot of wonderful range of projects here that we're able to support, from jazz to drag. And I think particularly the sort of pivot that both our officers and the artists themselves have had to do in order to kind of keep our creative sector not just kind of going, but finding new ways to disseminate and reach audiences in these times that we're in now. And so I, you know, I just want to say that, you know, we, I think on behalf of all of us, that we think this work is essential and that, as well as our koa, that you have our arroha. And yes, so it's my pleasure to introduce the paper.
Thank you. And is there a second there? Councillor Foon? Would you like to speak? Any other debate? Would you like to change your mind now?
Thank you. Yes, I think koa and arroha sums it up beautifully. Thank you councillor Matthews, again for bringing your lovely words. But yeah, probably just really want to extend our thanks to the team for really building relationships with our artists and really understanding each one of them and their needs so intimately. I think we did have a good question around what was going on, and I was really, yeah, thrilled to hear the level of engagement that we have with our arts community. So just want to acknowledge that, but thank you.
And yeah, thank you. I will just speak briefly because I know that when we went into lockdown, that there was some anxiety within the arts community in Wellington. A lot of them got in touch with us and were very proactive. And I just want to particularly commend Giselle Carr for her very proactive approach to that community and giving really clear reassurances very early on. Because I think the arts community know that they are the ones that come under fire quickly, and that's their experience over many, many years, that that funding, that their funding is seen as a nice-to-have instead of an essential part of how a city runs. And I'm really proud that this council in Wellington didn't take that approach and instead really gave, sent a very clear message early on that we value them and that they're a core part of our city. And I think this fund is another step in that direction. So I'll now put the motion. Those in favour, please press one. Those to the contrary, two.
Thank you. That's Kerry unanimously. And now we'll move on to the Natural Environment Fund. And I'll ask councillor Foon to introduce the report.
Great. Well, it is my pleasure to introduce the Natural Environment Fund report. I would like to, yeah, ngamahi nui to all of those that do the mahi on our taonga, our tao. It is critical to the vision of Wellington that this, that we are supporting our green infrastructure or our natural environment. And so I think we would possibly be the envy of the nation's eye, actually, in the way that we are so integrated with our natural environment. I do want to just have a big shout out to all of the community organisations in Wellington. They work so incredibly hard and they are so devoted, and it's actually really humbling to be around them a lot of the time. But today we have just over 50K. We're officially funding six of the projects that are coming through. But then once again, just acknowledging our great staff who are able to support the other two projects informally through council means. Councillor Terry O'Neill specifically wanted to acknowledge the Makarapik Bike Park supporters and just thank them for their patience and that we're finally getting there. So yes, an acknowledgement to all of the organisations that were about to give some koa and arroha. And yes, a second, councillor Pennett.
Just very quickly, I'd just like to thank the volunteers too, because there's a lot of really, really hard work over a long period of time to do this good work. And I just wish we had a lot more money to put into it because there is a lot more to do. And saying that, of course, our Natural Environment Fund is bigger than what we just put out to the community, thankfully. And of course councillor O'Neill got the extra money for weed management, which is excellent. So very pleased to support. Kia ora.
Thank you both. Is there any debate? All right, I'll put the motion. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favour, press one. If you're not so keen, press two. That's Kerry unanimously. Thanks, everybody. So finally, just to move on to the Take Ten application here, which I'm going to introduce. And I go, I mean, I think we heard very clearly from Clint what the kind of work that Take Ten do. And I want to start by acknowledging the officer support for Take Ten. There has been, over a long period of time before I was elected to this council, really strong officer support for this. And in relation to this application, there's been particularly from Jenny and Mark, very quick action, which is really appreciated because sometimes the council can be a bit, dare I say it, slow to respond to things in the community. But it was clear that what was happening on Courtney Place was not, was getting worse. And there were heightened tensions, more fights, and the council was struggling to find a way to contribute positively to what was happening on Courtney Place. And obviously, there's a whole lot of projects going on. There's the Nighttime Forum, there's better relationships with police, there's the Tiaro Park project, there's all sorts of things. But hardly ever do you get a very practical initiative that every single weekend can help people. And this, I think, is what Take Ten is. And I just also want to reassure fellow councillors that Take Ten by no means only comes to council. I've been involved and helped facilitate, actually, meetings between Take Ten and the police, the Ministry of Justice, the Minister of Justice, the Minister of Finance, local MPs, and other corporates as well, who might be interested in supporting Take Ten. And they have, they are very, very active in seeking other funding. And I think we can be sure that they will continue doing that. I guess I also just wanted to reflect on the wide support that exists for Take Ten. So regional public health are very strongly supportive of Take Ten. They really worry that there aren't enough prevention initiatives out there. And every time they come to this table and whenever I speak with them, they are very clear that this is one of the leading initiatives for harm prevention, particularly alcohol-related harm. But also, it's very widely supported by the police and the hospitality industry. So you hardly get the police, the hospitality industry and regional public health on the same page, but this is, this is one initiative that they all do agree on. And one of the problems that Take Ten has faced in the kind of post-COVID environment is the difficulty in accessing corporate sponsorship. They have had quite strong support for that before, but this is something that they, like many groups, are struggling with. And yeah, so finally, I guess I just wanted to say that Take Ten is about more than just giving people lolly and a drink. And actually, when we were there on Saturday night, it was clear the lollies weren't for the sake of the lolly. They actually gave them an opportunity to start a conversation with people who might be in a position where they need some support. So it's not really about the sugary sweet. It's really about trying to form a connection with a person who needs assistance and support. And actually, probably a lolly is one of the, one of the most accessible ways to do that, and cheap as well. So yeah, they are about more than just dealing with the behaviour or the situation that people find themselves in on a Friday or Saturday night. They are about influencing a whole culture. And we often find it's very difficult to get prevention initiatives supported. So I'm really pleased that we've been able to get this to the table. And as has been signalled, I'm moving that we allocate $95,000 of the support and recreation funding. So that's the motion that we're moving, that I'm moving. And that really is just because in the rush to get this into the papers for this meeting, we put a lot of pressure on Take Ten to get their application developed so we could consider it. And the support for security staff was missed out from that application. So really, it's just, it would have been in there to begin with. And it's also worth saying that there is other work going on in terms of the relationship with Take Ten and Maori wardens, and also ongoing support through the council, through the hosts and through Jenny Rains' team. So with that, I'm pleased to move this. Do I have a second? Councillor Day? Councillor, councillor, councillor Paul, you're seconding. Would you like to speak? Councillor Day.
Kia ora. I just want to also thank the staff for identifying the opportunity and looking for solutions really quickly. You know, when something rises up like this, you've got to find some quick solutions. And some of the other things that we've identified won't be quite as speedy and being resolved, but this one does make a definite difference. We saw it on Saturday night. And I totally agree, the lollies are very much a way into a conversation. It's hard for people to walk up to what is looking like a very busy hub if they don't really know what it's about, and it's a way of starting a conversation. And definitely saw that happening with people sort of holding back. And then the conversation started up about the water or the lollies, and before they knew it, they were playing Jenga, which I think even the mayor had a game of Connect Four and maybe Jenga as well. But I think it's pretty amazing that they can offer this service for $2,000 a night. Because when you consider that, it's not just those things, it's all of the overheads that you have as far as keeping a truck, which is a pretty impressive truck, operational. And the number of relationships, as councillor Fitzsimons said, that they have with different organisations to deliver what they are delivering is pretty amazing. And I really want to acknowledge Clint and the volunteers. I was actually reflecting the other day that there's no way I could do that, like to be there till 3:30 in the morning on a Saturday night. It's a pretty big commitment, and I think people are, you know, doing it. And the volunteers were just so happy in what they were doing, which was really cool. But the other thing I just wanted to mention was the work that the Take Ten, that vulnerable charitable trust are doing around a sort of youth zone and looking at setting something up possibly out in the Taural Indian area. And one of the things that was interesting, the young people didn't necessarily know a lot about Take Ten, but when they heard what it was about, their strong feeling was that, because we're sort of talking about, should the zone have a different name? And they said, well, no, if there's something in the city called Take Ten, it would be really good for young people out in the community to know when they go into the city, that that's a place that is for them, that it's safe. But they were really impressed. It was interesting. These are kids between the ages of 15 and 18, and they were really impressed to hear that there was something in the city that they could go to if they were in there and would help them out. And I think it's fantastic that Clint and Lee and the team are really thinking about how they can make the most of the service they have. So they've got this truck now. What can they do for the rest of the week? So it's not sitting in a garage somewhere, it's actually out in the community being utilised and supporting community, which I think is really smart. And I just hope that we can continue to help them, you know, make more imprint into our community across the board. And yeah, really also would love to see the conversations with Maori wardens connecting with Take Ten, you know, progress, because I think there is a really great opportunity for relationship building through that zone and hopefully spreading into what we can do with Tiaro Park. But yeah, thank you so much again to the staff. Really appreciate it.
Any other? Councillor Pennett?
Kia ora, kato. Look, I'm sorry, I'm actually going to vote against this today. And, but I just, first of all, want to acknowledge the work of volunteers because obviously everyone who gives up an hour of their time, it's really important. And, you know, obviously for your leadership councillors and also, look, I think it's a good idea. However, that is a lot of money. And I do have some ideas about how to fund social services in this country. And I'm like, for lollies and water and a bit of referral, I'm not comfortable with that. It really is quite a lot of money. And I guess just the other point is the, that we are going to struggle. We are really going to struggle. This city is going to be in for some tough times. And I think, dear me, channeling our councillor colleague Nicola Young, we're going to have to make some tough calls. And I just think that people are going to have to work really, really, really hard. that people are going to have to work really, really, really hard to, to show when there is hardship. And there will be hardship. There already is hardship. What's going to be the biggest priority for us? So like, I'm sorry to be, you know, in ordinary times, if there was more money, I'd be happy to put it through. But I, and I would be happy to move a lesser amount of money, but I don't think I'll get support. So I don't want to waste the time of the committee. But yeah, I just think it's time to just really look hard at where we're putting our money. I mean, a hundred K is a lot of, a lot of money for me. Thank you.
Councillor Foon.
Kia ora, I will be supporting this actually. I didn't have the pleasure of going down and really soaking in it on Saturday night. But I think what I'm seeing here is an initiative that's actually supporting our business community and the late night economy, which they really need right now. But it's also creating a culture shift in our city that we really, really, really need. And actually, if we had to pay for that, you know, ninety five K is barely, you know, I mean, it's a good wage in a bit. And that's really what we're saying. We're employing someone to do this. And as councillor Day has just pointed out, that it would be fifteen hundred dollars if the volunteers were to be paid. So I think this is a great deal. It's also a way to collaborate and connect as councillor Fitzsimons pointed out, to get the police, the hospitality industry and the DHB in the same space. And I think just coming from a service background, I can see that initiative of reaching out to people on the street. It's such a positive influence that I think it's, it's cheap for what we're getting. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Cool. Anyone else? Mayor Foster, did you want to speak? Okay, you're all right. All right. Because we're about to put the motion. All right. So just a, just a very brief write of reply from me. And I thank councillor Pennett for, you know, putting an alternative view because I think it is important for us to have a, you know, an alternative view at the table. I guess what I would say is that I absolutely accept that the city is going to be going through some tough times. And what we know when economies go into recession and people go through tough times is that alcohol related harm increases. So to me, this is exactly the right time to be making this investment. And I think it's, you know, particularly timely given those circumstances. So I will put the motion. All those in favour, press one. If you're not keen, press two. No, it's just been moved as that. Yeah. Can you please, I've put the vote. That's carried. All right. Thanks, everybody, for a short meeting. We didn't even get to a morning tea. But obviously, there's been a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes before we get to this meeting. So. You too.